Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
We have a quorum. President, would everybody please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. This is how it goes. This is how it goes. This is how it goes, the summary. Okay, any citizens wishing to address the board tonight on anything other than what's on committee of the whole? Okay. Hi.
How are you?
In your name, please.
My name's Corey Groupie.
What's that?
Corey Groupie.
Okay.
I've lived in town for about eighteen years. I'm here representing a company that my partners I have opened called All Good LLC. And what I would like to do is talk to the board about being able to set up a presentation for you. We are in the process of opening three recreational cannabis dispensaries. So I'd like to opportunity to come back the next month or so and present to you and show you the benefits of what it would be, what it could do for the town and the amount of money it could generate for the town.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, why don't we have a meeting before we have a meeting?
I tried to do that.
Oh, you did?
But nobody would answer my, they would hang up the phone and say, no, we're not interested. Yeah. Mike Atkinson would say, we're not interested, we're not talking about that. That was the only conversation.
You're absolutely sure?
Yeah, positive, with multiple people calling.
Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have gotten multiple calls and what we, what we've explained to each of the callers is that, per the new state regulations in bill, the first step is for the board to make, to have a discussion whether or not to allow the sale of it within the village or not allow the sale within the village. Short of the board making that decision, it wouldn't be appropriate for staff to be talking to prospective business owners of recreational marijuana. We first need the direction from the board, do we want it or not?
That's what I'm here doing.
Yeah, well, we don't need you to do that. We ought to discuss it amongst ourselves, obviously.
Okay.
So we don't need you to tell us yes or no. I think there's enough information out there.
It's not about telling you yes or no.
No, 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 stop. You know, it's three percent and it can be three percent of a lot of money. I know that. And I'm sure you do. You have, you have the capacity with your group to actually, you have a license yourself.
Nobody has one yet until...
No, no, do you have an existing license of any sort to sell medicinal, grow, or infuse?
No, we are, we have, our license will be going in on October 1st along with everybody else's.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, the board will decide, I guess, when we'll bring this up. I don't know. You know, it's, it's up to the board.
I'd like to say something.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
If you know a lot of the surrounding communities, you know, I talk to a lot of the parents, get a lot of text emails, quite honestly, this community, I can tell you, everyone that's approached me, quite a few are not in favor of having any business that sells marijuana for recreational use.
As somebody that lives in town, I've heard the opposite.
And you know what, a lot of places around in Lake County, Lake Forest, Lincolnshire, I mean, it's not an uncommon, it's not extraordinary.
We have a meeting with Lincolnshire next week. We have a meeting with Libertyville and Green.
I'm sure you do, I'm sure you do. But like, you know, the mayor said, I can assure you from my vantage point, I'm a firm no, so. And that's just based upon people in the community. This isn't just Craig's opinion. This is, you know, I'm here on behalf of the community, this isn't my agenda at all, so. In fact, I got a, I know someone in the business and, you know, who has medicinal licenses already. They're the second largest in Illinois. And he knows that the surrounding communities here are just not really an area they're even looking at.
Well, I think we'll bring, we should bring it, put it on the agenda, maybe what, after October 1st?
That's strictly up to you. What I'd like to do, I've talked to our council, they're prepared with a PowerPoint presentation to schedule a meeting with the board. We can do a full-blown presentation discussion. My question to the board is, do you want to schedule a special meeting for this? Or do you want to try and put this on a committee of the whole where we don't have a whole lot of other business? We can keep the business.
You know, I don't mind having a special meeting.
Okay.
And encourage everybody to come. And to be honest with you, you know, I think maybe at some point, we gotta do some kind of a survey and not just you know this and I know this, and you know what I mean? It's a microchasm. I mean, we got twenty-seven thousand people in town. And I, and I am aware of the fact that three percent, if you're doing twenty or thirty million in sales, it ain't pocket change.
It's about a thirty percent increase year over year.
Pardon me?
With about a thirty percent increase in sales year over year for the first five years.
Whatever. I mean, if it pans out, okay? And hopefully Illinois is, you know, waking up to the fact that you can't let everybody grow it and they're not gonna.
Exactly.
Because you got surpluses in some of these states that, you know, give me a break, you know? Don't even bother thinking you're, the state's gonna make money, the towns are gonna make money. You know what I mean? If everybody's growing it, Christ, in Portland, they got six times the supply to the demand and Colorado ain't much different, so.
Like I said, Illinois is...
Yeah, I know. You don't have to tell me. I've been, I've read a lot of stuff already, you know? But three percent of thirty million, twenty million, it ain't pocket change. That's all I'm saying. And I'll be honest, anybody else want to talk to this? Okay, Tom Cook.
Yeah, I just wanted to, staff cannot talk to you about something they don't have information to talk to you about.
I'm aware of that, but he asked, you know, did I communicate?
I understand, but I, I'm not understanding why you...
I didn't ask you to...
Why you would say that staff, no, why you would say that staff had told you numerous times that they couldn't discuss it. Once should have been enough because there wasn't anything for staff to discuss with.
The way I understood the conversation was come and speak to the board to get it, to be, to talk about it. Is basically the way it was explained to me, which is why I'm here right now.
Because I know, my personal feeling on it is we've got to figure out what we want to do as a board first. And then, and then we'll talk to people like you about, you know, if, if we choose to go forward with it. Because I've always found that it's much better if the horse is in front of the cart. It just works better that way.
Sure.
So we've got to get our ordinance in place and then...
I'm just here to get the discussion going.
Well, you're not here, you know, for anything other than the profit motive.
Well, I want to open a business, yes.
Well, it's a profit motive, a huge one. What would you realize out of thirty million bucks in sales?
What would I make?
If you, if you owned the retail location?
It's a good number.
Well, give me the number. You're the guy that's, you know, got all the answers. Give me the number.
What would I make?
If you don't know, I'll give it to you.
Basically, after we pay everybody off, we have all of our, all of our staff is paid. I don't know, we could make upwards around a million dollars a year.
It's not pocket change.
No, it's not.
For you.
Correct. Or for the town.
Well, no, for you also.
Correct.
Well, you're gonna give us the million, then, then it makes sense. Two million, you ain't taking anything? I'll figure out, this board will figure out what to do with two million. If it's just a hobby.
Just a hobby? No, it's not just a hobby.
Okay, great.
So...
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll get to it eventually, but the board's got to decide. And we're gonna, I personally think we need input from the community on this one.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't, you know, you know this, I know that. I got a neighbor who wants to hang me by my thumb.
Right, but I have another comment, even if...
If we open a retail center.
Roger, even if we were to even remotely consider this, you wouldn't be the only person we'd consider because then obviously it would be, we'd have some guidelines and we'd probably get a hundred people to apply. If we offered, yeah, we could have, we'd allow one business to, you know, to open up here. So, you know, the thing is, please consider that. You wouldn't be the only one considered, even if, again, remotely this was even, came to fruition.
No, I'm, I'm well aware of that. And again, you know...
And there's no guarantee you get a license, right? You're just, you just submitted the application. And from what I understand, there's a lot of licenses, applications going. And again, I know someone who's already in the business, they're the second largest here. And, you know, they automatically get the license to sell.
Well, yeah, the guys that are the medicinal guys, they're in.
Well, they automatically get the license to sell, right, yes.
Yeah, we know that. You know, you know that, now I, I know that too. So, you know, I don't want to trip over ourselves on this one, but, you know, if it's, but it's obviously coming.
It is, so.
What do you mean by obviously coming?
January 1st, it's coming.
Buffalo Grove.
It's coming. I mean, I don't know, somebody's gonna sell, somebody's gonna sell this stuff.
But not here, you just mean?
Yeah, January 1st, statutorily, the state of Illinois adopted the date. Are we all agreeing on that? I said the state of Illinois. I didn't say Vernon Hills.
No, you said it's obviously coming, you weren't specific, that's what I meant.
Okay, now I am.
Okay.
All right, Jesus. You know, good, this is good for me. I was on vacation, I, you know, I was mellowed out, but this is good for me. This has got my juices going already. All right, what else? Is that enough?
Is that enough? Yeah, sure.
Yeah, all right, okay. You know, hey, we'll, we'll try to give whoever, everybody and anybody a fair shake, but we gotta decide and the towns gotta decide. And if we don't care if they sell it somewhere else, we don't care.
Well, we're also gonna take into consideration Chief Kreese's perspective on this as well, which he's already given his input in previous meetings, you could look. So you, you, you get an idea of where we stand as a...
I'm aware, again.
And I would talk to Chief Kreese because he's part of...
Let me be a total fly in the ointment because I'm rolling now, okay?
Uh-huh, oh, great.
Okay, what if we took whatever sales tax we got and we used it to fund schools?
Yeah, I knew you were gonna make it a political issue, so it's...
Yeah, well, isn't it a political issue? Not in your mind, Craig? Come on, stop.
If we want to go through every line item on, you know, the cost of, you know, legalization, whether it would be law enforcement, the healthcare costs, as Dr. Oppenheim could probably attest to, so you know what, we gotta weigh, you know, there's more to it than just X amount of revenue against, you know, a pro forma that is maybe at thirty million, I think's in flux.
Well, that's why I think we need a special meeting later on to discuss this in greater...
Hey, I'm just telling you, hey, some, some school district that's near and dear to us that all their buildings are in town, they got some shortfalls. You don't think so? Hey, you know?
I would just, again, like to, you know, you, obviously you've, you're aware of everything. A lot of you guys are aware of whatever, what all of it is. But, you know, I'd like to come in and show you what we have and what we're doing. And what, you know, as somebody that lives in the town, obviously it's important to me where that money goes and what it does. And then the ancillary things, so.
Yeah.
The schools would be a great thing, seeing as how we just borrowed a ton of money for them.
It's gonna be a public meeting that we're gonna have, so he'll be entitled to, to join us.
Agreed, and to that...
But, but to that, to that point though, I don't know if we want every single potential distributor spending twenty minutes talking about what they're gonna add. So they'll, they'll each get a few minutes to, to...
We could be here for, for months.
Exactly.
We could be here till June.
We'll just need to make sure that, that we clarify the process.
If you want to check your schedules, I'm looking at the last Tuesday in, I went to the wrong month.
October?
I was gonna say September.
Oh, you wanna wait till?
Be September 24th?
Will we...
I thought you would wait till October.
Well, we are gonna need some time to draft, whatever the decision of the board is, we're gonna need some time to draft the ordinance and get it in place and approved.
That would be the current update to the existing zoning? That's what we're working on right now, is to take the current medical marijuana zoning ordinance and update it to include recreational?
You'd only do that if you decide to go forward.
But you'd have a draft of that, you're, you're working on a draft of that. And you'd have that available at that time?
You'd do zoning, yep, correct.
Twenty-fourth works for me.
September 24th at seven o'clock here at the Village Hall.
Do, I mean, do we need him to, to work on a draft already before, is that necessary?
Not necessarily. It'd be a discussion and based upon the discussion and the vote of the board, the discussion of the board, we either have an opt-in or opt-out ordinance, which would be ready for the following board meeting. And if it's an opt-out, then that's it. We, we are, we are saying we are not going to do it. If it's an opt-in, then yes, we would have to have an amendment to the zoning to address the issues.
Well, shouldn't we do the zoning anyway?
If, if you're precluding and saying you're not going to allow it...
Well, but to establish it right now so that should a future board in a future time decide to opt back in, then you've already got the zoning in place.
You could go through that process. Zoning, as you know, is gonna have to go through the, you know, the planning and zoning process. There's gonna have to be public hearings involved and ultimately a recommendation to come up from that body to you. That's gonna take more time than between now and September 24th. But on the 24th, we can present options. We can go through the possible restrictions that you can impose in terms of keeping dispensaries certain distance from schools and churches, you know, things like that. We can cover all of the various options available in, under the new law for zoning. And then we could put zoning, a zoning ordinance together if you decide to. That's certainly an option. But I think the first step would be for us to lay out all the various elements of the statute and you to make a decision.
Those that have been here, anyone at the time, already know that from a retail or even when it was a medicinal selling place, it was backed by Gordmans.
That was the Grow Center. No, the Grow Center...
That wasn't the Grow Center.
Yeah.
The Grow Center would have been in the Business Park.
No, the only place that the Grow Center can be is at Gordmans. The only place...
Who's got the ordinance?
Trust me, I remember this one, sir. And then the retail, or the medical established dispensaries were limited pretty much into the Business Parks.
The Grow, okay.
The dispensaries were limited to the Business Parks.
Well, has anybody got the, what we already adopted?
We don't have it with, but...
Yeah, we can do all that at the 22 point with me, we've got other stuff.
That's what I actually recalled.
Yeah, that's, well, I mean, it's not like we haven't addressed it initially.
That would be seven o'clock on the 24th?
Yes, sir.
I still think before we make a decision as a board, we do a, we do a survey.
If I may, Libertyville did...
No, wait a second. You know what I'm saying? Does the board understand that?
Yes.
Find out what the community thinks. Not just, not just predicated on you know fifty people, you know fifty people, I know fifty, you know what I mean?
I know a hundred.
Wow, you're, Craig, I, oh, I, I always knew you were special, you know?
Well, you know, I've...
I've got eight-hundred-and-ninety-six contacts in my telephone contact list.
If we, if we were gonna do this, then we need to make sure that it was a legitimate survey, not just...
Yeah, I guess, you know?
Well, I mean, the only way to really do it would be a scientific poll, you know? Because we don't have everybody signed up for Blackboard Connect and all that.
Even though we try.
Even though we try.
There's plenty of Facebook.
I'm sure we get, we get...
I'm not a fan of Facebook keyboard warriors.
Well, what I'm saying, well, Jim, what I'm saying is there's Hawthorne Club, there's Deer Path, the Moms of, you know, D-73, I mean, it's all out there.
But I, I guess it's, I go back, again, I'm a...
Can't put it in the mail.
I'm a child of the, the fifties and sixties and the old silent majority. They always remain silent. You gotta reach in and find them to really find out what...
Hey, absolutely.
Yeah, so...
They should also show up on the 24th, so I mean, if, again.
Okay.
So is that the date then and, and we're gonna publicize it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we need a bigger room, we'll figure that out.
We'll figure that out.
Figure it out.
We'll get it.
School auditorium.
We might.
High school. Like Libertyville did.
Either the high school or the Sullivan Center. We could do it there too.
Yeah, Libertyville's actually using their Civic Center.
It'd be a bad venue because it's...
The Civic Center isn't that big, that's not, that's a small room.
It's not, but they, they had opted for, it's actually the 26th there, but they're doing it in the Civic Center. Obviously, you know, size, it just kind of worked for them, that's where they decided to go.
Because I think...
Oh, the high school's doing something on this?
The, Libertyville's doing it at the, because when I spoke to them, they're doing it at the Libertyville Civic Center, which is like a block away from, it's not a very big venue, but that's...
Well, that isn't very big.
Yeah, it's a small space, we got more room in here than they do.
We'll do it at inside the border basketball, the basketball...
Jam or the auditorium or something like that.
Auditorium, man, we should reach out to 128 Dr. Gilliam, I'll, you know, make sure he wants, you know, they want input on this.
Yeah.
For sure.
The, the list is endless, Craig, why don't you start making it? You can, you know, you can be a chart.
Well, the schools obviously are definitely, yeah. I'm sure Dr. Gillian would be more than happy to...
Yeah. All right. Next is, any other citizens wishing to address the board on anything other than what we just talked about? Okay, next, scheduled village board meeting will be September 3rd.
The only thing I want to point out there is that is the Tuesday immediately after Labor Day?
No.
It's, it's a...
Can we do it on Wednesday or something?
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing this up because when the schedule was cut, I, obviously that wasn't caught. If you would like to change that to Wednesday, the 4th.
I don't know about the rest of the board.
I'm comfortable with Tuesday.
Yeah, me too.
For which, I'm sorry, which day?
The next village board meeting.
Second or third? Second is the Tuesday after Labor Day.
She's September 3rd.
I'm sorry, 3rd or 4th? Thank you, sir. Right now, scheduled for Tuesday, the 3rd. Do you want to make it the 4th? I'm comfortable with the 3rd.
Yeah, I'm fine with Tuesday, I don't need that.
Okay, we'll leave it as the 3rd then?
Okay. School Open Safety Week proclamation. Village President, Schools Open Safety Week proclamation, August 19th through August 23rd, 2019. Whereas the children in our community and all across the state and the nation are beginning a new school year, students will be walking or biking to school in neighborhoods on sidewalks and streets, approaching or waiting at school bus stops and boarding or dismounting from buses. Police officers, school bus drivers, and crossing guards will also be doing their part to provide life-saving protection for all schoolchildren, not only in Vernon Hills, but also statewide and nationally. Motors can help protect children by being especially careful near schools and in residential areas, watching their speed, obeying the Illinois Cell Phone Use Law, observing traffic control devices and obeying school crossing guards. It is important to increase all motors' awareness of the need to be alert for children at school crossings, to review and follow the rules of the road as they apply to school zones and school buses, and to be respectful of school crossing guards as they perform their important duties. Now therefore, I, Roger L. Byrne, Village President, proclaim the period of August 19th through August 23rd, 2019, as schools open Safety Week in Vernon Hills dated this 13th day of August, 2019. And, you know, so everybody be careful with the children and obey the speed limit, which is, what is it? Twenty miles an hour in all school zones, chief?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
No phones.
I don't know if everybody knows that. And then cell phones, those are specials. Somebody, somebody in my house sees, you know, all the people dropping their kids off at the middle school and they're chatting away on a handheld cellphone. It's special, you know? So the signs, I don't know, are they dead good? I still think we ought to get the zombie signs. You know, the signs that show people make, crossing the street, looking at their cell phones, you know? And it's, it says, be careful. It's a wonderful sign, I thought, but, Dave, let's make up a couple, just see what happens. See if anybody even looks at those. Okay.
How, how long does it take an officer to write a ticket for that?
It, I mean, it certainly depends, but it, call fifteen to thirty minutes is a fair...
Yeah, that's too bad. We could get that down to about a minute so that we could just... I mean, you know, Lincolnshire, remember when the seatbelt law went into effect? They stationed an officer on the corner of 22 and 21. And anybody who didn't have a seatbelt on, they just tapped on the window and handed them, it was a replica, not a very good one, of a dollar bill and said, you just would have spent whatever the fee, the, the fine was. Maybe we do that at the school?
Yeah, we've, we've done some of those unorthodox, unconventional enforcement reminders from time to time. We've, we've put officers out on foot and school back is a great time to remind people about...
Yeah, I, I would have no problem with you doing something like that. Anytime you saw one, hand them some, because, yeah, it's, number one, no one should be dropping their kid off. There's, we have these things, these big yellow things called buses. Didn't hurt my kids, they allowed them to socialize, learned how to socialize. Anyway, I digress. Excuse me, I shut up.
You don't have to. Sometimes rambling's not bad.
Thank you.
Okay. What else we got here? Summer Celebration wrap-up?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a shout-out and a thank you to a whole bunch of people that made this summer celebration possible. This is, everyone is probably very well aware, it was a very trying year with the heat, close to a hundred degrees, the high humidity, the thunderstorms that came in that caused us to close down and evacuate the site for a few hours, the storms that put down several inches of rain both on, on Thursday when they were trying to set up the event and on Saturday, just prior to the main stage concert event. Just a tremendous amount of work went into this one, more so than any others. A tremendous amount of thanks goes to the Public Works crew. Without these guys, this event would not have been possible. The way they jumped on it, got their entire crew out there, evacuated water from the grass, from the parks, from the sidewalks, I mean, we had rivers running through there. And it made Saturday night one of the most successful nights we've had. As a matter of fact, for the entire, Saturday night made the entire event possible.
Yeah.
Kept us, kept us in the black, so to speak. Not by much, but it kept us in the black.
Within reason.
Pardon me?
Within reason.
Within reason. So the Summer Celebration Committee this year was Kathy Zerillo, Brandon and Jamie Atkins, Jeff and Tony Pastorino, Sue Hoffman, Gretchen Grotta, Danielle Wells, Jamie Nevis, Kyle Suckland, and Ena Marquardt. As I said...
I thought Ena retired about five years ago.
She did, but she keeps coming back, like the Energizer Bunny. This year, she was in charge of the VIP tent and hospitality for the event, so. Did a great job.
Yeah, that's your baby.
This is one of the hardest-working and most dedicated groups of volunteers I've ever had the pleasure of working with. Many of them take multiple days off from their jobs to work the event. All of these people are truly volunteers. Many of them leave their kids with relatives to work for the entire four-day event. And the majority of these people have been doing this for twenty-plus years. I mean, it's really a family event that some of them have passed down to their children. It really is a great cohesive group. The planning effort starts in the fall with monthly meetings, listening to music groups, working with carnival operators, creating the multi-layered public relations and soliciting donations, scheduling events, activities during the four days, getting volunteers who work all the booths, work behind the bar, make sure we have food vendors, required paperwork, coordinating the fireworks, controlling parking. I mean, there's just so much more of this than meets the eye. And it's truly a family affair by a group of people who love doing this for their committee. Also, thanks to our cultural partners who made significant donations and contributions to the village that helped to underwrite this event, including Steinhoffs, Gewalt Hamilton, the Tucson Corporation, Advanced Disposal, CDW, Jacobson and Sue Orthodontics, Worth Bear Supply, Chase Bank, Icon Builders, Bear Fit, Restolium, and Claim Company.
How about American Hotel?
I don't know.
I'm just asking.
Not this year. Not this year. And a special, special thanks to Hit, Hits Pizza and Sports Bar for their generous donations of food for the VIP night and to feed the police department and the Public Works employees during the event. Howard at A to Z Entertainment, who does all the announcing, the M seeing, uh, for us and DJing. The Knights of Columbus, Lions Club and the American Legion, and Aaron McElroy, who helps, uh, coordinate the music.
Bo Deans.
The Bo Deans. Does anyone you know?
Yeah, shit, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And again, a very special thanks to the Vernon Hills Park District for their cooperation, the Vernon Hills Public Works and Police Departments, the Finance Department, the Village Manager's Office, especially my assistant Liz, who I think literally was pulling her hair out trying to work through the contracts and negotiations this year for the first time.
Since Liz is here, here you hear.
The Countryside Fire Protection District, who, uh, worked very closely with us in determining whether or not we should cancel, you know, close down the site and help us with the evacuation. Um, and the Lake County Sheriff's Deputy's Reserve, or, or Lake County Sheriff's Department Reserve deputies, who did all the traffic control for the entire event.
Yeah.
And lastly, but certainly not least, a big thank you to the Mayor and Board of Trustees for your continued support of this community event. And believe it or not, we've already begun and had the first meeting to start working on next year's event.
Yeah.
So thank you to everyone.
No, it's a joint, joint effort, more than joint effort, multiple, multiple, multiple parties involved, so... Yeah, I'm glad they, we got Saturday night, Saturday night in.
The first two nights were really tough, but I mean, by, uh, by the time the storms had passed and got the water cleared out, the temperature had dropped about 20-some degrees. There was a nice breeze blowing. It was really nice and the place was packed.
Yeah. Hey, people understand free.
Hey, and it was, you know what? It was, it's a nice, safe, family event.
Yeah, yeah, it always is, you know, and I know we, there's help with, you know, if there's desperadoes out here, we kind of know through other departments who's, could be disruptive, always have, so... Yeah, okay. All right, Chief. Thanks. Uh, Resolution 2019-04. What is, you got that one?
That one's going to be handled by Corporate Counsel.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The, the Inducement Resolution before the board relates to the Hawthorne Mall redevelopment. Purpose of this resolution is to acknowledge the village's intent to pursue the proposed project, which is the redevelopment of the mall, which includes investigating and possibly creating a TIF district in the area of the mall and negotiating in good faith an RDA with the owner and the developer that addresses the ultimate uses as, as part of the redevelopment and possible TIF incentives to be provided. Uh, the resolution further provides that the village intends to reimburse itself from TIF funds incurred in establishing the TIF and also to reimburse the developer for TIF-eligible expenses expended prior to the establishment of the TIF district if terms of an RDA can be, can be reached. So what the resolution does is give the developer some comfort level in continuing to spend money on renovating the mall, but at the same time, it's non, non-binding on the village as to setting up a TIF or even entering into an RDA if ultimately we can't reach terms. I can answer any questions? Is there any?
But I question the, um, on the agenda here, it has it as 049, but in the, um, omnibus, it's got it at 040. I just want to make sure we're... Which one is the right number?
Sounds like 040, isn't it?
040, okay, thank you.
Will be corrected in part of the minutes.
If there's no questions, this item appears on, oh, I'm sorry, if you had one. I was just gonna say, this item is on the omnibus agenda.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any questions. I just want to make a, a comment just so that the audience knows that we're, that we're not agreeing really to anything, and it's just to clarify that, uh, that the firms can get their money back as part of the TIF for any work that they do in anticipation of, of this.
Correct.
But, but, um, furthermore, to, to be fully above board, I've been looking at, uh, I've been trying to find information on the Melody Farm TIF, and it was somewhat difficult to find. To that end, I asked Ann to, to help me find the proper ordinances, and we're gonna, and then I spoke with Mark, and we're gonna put that on the, the village's website under the Melody Farm heading to make sure that it's easy for everyone to find. And going forward, we're gonna do our best to, to make sure that that kind of information is readily available for everyone, because I've had some, uh, questions regarding that.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Uh, Public Works Director, Dave Brown.
Thank you. So the Vernon Hills Public Works Open House is, uh, uh, Wednesday, August 28th, uh, from 4 to 7. Uh, it's a really nice community event. Uh, it's usually well-attended. Please come out and join us. We have this every two years, so make sure you don't miss it. Uh, we have a lot of families that show up. There's food, there's helicopters, the sweeper. A lot of people see our activities on the street, but they don't really get, uh, up close and personal with the, uh, equipment. So we'd love to have them come out, and, uh, again, that's, uh, August 28th from 4 to 7. It's a Wednesday, so come join us.
Yeah, it, it's a, yeah, it's a nice event, you know? And there are demonstrations. Next is Omnibus Vote Agenda. Their motion to approve A through, um, through F.
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Motion carries. Unfinished business, Advanced Disposal discussion, WMI acquisition of Advance and Swalco's concerns update. Who's taking this one? Oh, John.
John is.
Good evening. In the transmitted detailed information was shared regarding the status of the pending acquisition of Advanced Disposal by Waste Management, which is anticipated to be finalized during the first quarter of 2020. Also shared was Swalco's concern that if the Department of Justice allows Waste Management to acquire Advanced Disposal without any landfill or processing facility divestment, a monopoly will result due to Waste Management having 63% of Lake County households under contract, ownership of both Lake County landfills, and ownership of the only material recovery facility in Lake County able to process recyclables. Should Waste Management have ownership of both Lake County landfills and the only recycling center, Swalco, which represents Lake County municipalities, is concerned about competition and price control as competing waste towers will either have to pay fees set by Waste Management for access to their landfills and recycling center or competing waste towers not using Waste Management facilities will be required to travel greater distances. One example of how this may impact Vernon Hills residents is the next closest landfill, not currently owned by Waste Management or the one owned by Advance, would be into Calab County. The concern raised by Swalco is the cost for a competing waste tower to transport waste to a distant location will be passed on to residents if divestment from landfills and recovery centers does not occur. Due to these factors, Swalco has retained an attorney to ensure community interests are considered during the acquisition. Swalco restates its position that a monopoly not be allowed to exist. As the board is aware, our Waste Management provider is Advanced Disposal, and our current contract with Advanced Disposal expires November 30th, 2020. Walter Willis, the Executive Director for Swalco, recently met with village staff and suggested this is the ideal time for the village of Vernon Hills to evaluate its options and consider seeking a contract extension from Advance prior to the acquisition. Based on this suggestion, staff met with Advanced Disposal GM Chris Manley and Regional Director Bob Pfister to determine if a contract extension was an option at this time. We were advised, Advanced Disposal and Waste Management are competitors until the acquisition is approved. We learned personnel from Advance are prohibited from communicating with personnel from Waste Management regarding contractual services and pricing, and Advance is willing to enter into discussions for a contract extension for Vernon Hills and make a competitive offer for residential waste services. In addition, with market forces impacting the recycling industry and the potential for significant cost increases, Advance is willing to explore options to keep costs contained as well as reduce the number of trucks traveling throughout the village. Advance is also willing to explore food scrapping options to reduce negative impacts on the environment while also minimizing additional trucks traveling throughout our village. At this time, options for the village include the following. Option 1, the village can wait until after the first quarter of 2020, and should the acquisition of Advanced Disposal by Waste Management occur, Waste Management automatically will become our provider, and we can seek a new contract with Waste Management. Option 2, the village can conduct an RFP next year. However, it must be emphasized, Swalco's concerns appear legitimate, and with the limited number of waste tower options serving our market as compared to years past, access to local landfills and access to the only local recycling processing center, the concern is, these factors will adversely impact the cost for the Vernon Hills resident. The third option is, with board approval, staff can begin discussions with Advance prior to the acquisition and seek an extension of services. These discussions can occur without obligation. Should a contract extension be agreed to prior to the acquisition, which is expected to be in early 2020, Waste Management still, would still become our waste provider and be required to honor the contract. At this time, with consultation from Swalco and discussion with council, staff feels the best option is to begin discussions and potentially negotiations with Advance for a contract extension. This offer can be brought to the board for consideration within the next 90 days. At this time, uh, Dave, no, Dave left. All right, at this time, myself and, uh, Mark and counsel can ask any questions or try to address any concerns.
Well, you, who's got a, listen, uh, where, where, so DeCalb is the, the nearest disposal?
What, uh, Swalco's advised is that's the next landfill not owned currently by Advanced Disposal or Waste Management.
What's across the border in Wisconsin?
Is, I do not know that.
Well, that's not that far, you know?
Good point, Roger.
You know?
Very good.
Hey, maybe, maybe Foxconn will dig a hole, you know? They got enough land up there, Christ. But there's gotta be something across the border. You know, Wisconsin, it just doesn't evaporate. You know, we, you know, we don't have in Lake County, we don't have a transfer station, period. Now, transfer stations, do they sometimes put it on boxcars? I, you know, I mean, there's gotta be stuff that's moved by train. There has to be.
So in our discussions with Swalco and with Chris, they said, uh, the problem with it, even like the recycling, is it's very labor-intensive, and that's where the costs are coming, is every time you have to take, uh, and package something and put it somewhere, the cost, like, perhaps like running a municipality are in the labor.
Well, I mean, are, is anybody using the newspaper to do anything? You know what I mean? As far as, is it just go to landfill? I mean, you know, there's, there's some concerns about that.
Well, yeah, a lot of it is going because it's easier. Um, a lot of the small communities, if they fill, and typically now, they're filling up their recycling bin before they fill up their garbage bin. So when you show up at a rural community, they tell you to throw all your recycling into the garbage because they don't have room for it. The marketplace changed dramatically when China said, "No more garbage." Um, and the other thing is, though, that the pulp mills are still accepting newspaper, but they prefer corrugated because newspaper is too far down the, the chain, and it, it's adequate, but it's not desirable. Where at least corrugated is somewhat desirable for future manufacturing.
So when you think about what your recycling is, it's not a lot of corrugated.
No, uh, aluminum is the, the biggest, and that's the only one where I think they're still making money.
Correct.
Plastic, glass.
Plastic is tough, and glass isn't all that.
Yeah.
Glass, there is money in glass.
That is correct, so these are all valid, and, uh, what Mark and I discussed is, when we've met with Advance, you know, we felt there might be too much information at this point to try to share what their strategy is, uh, going forward. They, they, uh, indicate that they believe, no matter who the hauler is going to be in the future, there's going to be significant price increases for recycling. And so, you know, when I mentioned, uh, some of the options, you know, one of the options they were talking about is, uh, we can try to train the community, but ideally, what they're saying is, uh, a lot of the stuff being put in the recycling is trash, and it's, it's labor, it's having to sift, human labor, that's having to sift it and put it into another container to take to a dump, and they're saying that that is not ideal for cost. And whoever the haulers, that's going to be potentially passed on.
So, so where does, does Waste Management do that, at their location in Grayslake? I mean, do they have some?
Yes.
Okay, going through all the, the recyclables.
So I, I have not been in discussions, uh, with Waste Management. My discussions have purely been with Advance and Swalco, so I don't know exactly how-
Yeah, because then, then you jump to construction debris, and all of a sudden, those are individual, you know, plants-
Right.
That really, really go through it because of the rebar and all that stuff.
Right, the steel and, and-
And then those go to different sites.
Right.
You know?
I, I had a nephew who had a part-time job up in Grayslake, and his, after his first day, he made a Facebook post and said, "Please, folks, dog excrement is not recyclable." They were putting, you know, they, the plastic bag, and the plastic, and the plastic bags screw up the conveyor systems, so they don't want those. They want you to take those to the grocery store where they can, in fact, uh, bail those, and that goes to a, a separate user. It's gonna cost us a lot more money if we want to keep recycling. We're our own worst enemy with these, you know, one-use water bottles, all the single-use plastics. That's, we're our own worst enemy.
And our major-
Trustee, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, our concern is that if the merger goes through, we're gonna be facing, obviously, um, one vendor. And any other vendor is gonna be far away, and they're gonna have a lot, a lot longer way to transport garbage to dump it, whether it's in a landfill or whether it goes to a recycling center, and that's all gonna add to the cost. Right now, um, what we'd like to do is, we're seeking board's approval to talk with Advance and get a proposal from them to extend-
How long a term are you thinking?
Uh, what's our current one, five years? I would, I would extend five years, and then whoever absorbs, if Waste Management absorbs Advance, they would have to honor that, that agreement. So we think because of that, we may be able to drive a much better deal.
Trustee Takaka?
Yeah, I've got a question. So, how come we don't, can we get them to put like recycling bins around the parks, park areas, um, around the golf course? I mean-
So, so the, the answer to that is, yes, we can do anything, but the one thing that I can share is, uh, we've had a lot of, uh, people that have come to the village hall and approached us for different ideas, uh, including scrapping, composting, recycling, uh, and one, one common thing that I'm seeing some, uh, opposition to, uh, including your HOA, is people want to see less trucks or they don't want that container too close to their house. Uh, they, there's, there's a, uh-
Of course.
There's a head, there's, so like, the, the biggest one I can share is, uh, we have a Go Green of Vernon Hills Lincolnshire that wants to see composting, wants to see scrapping. They want to see community composting, community scrapping, and, you know, I can't find a plot, uh, where I can do that. And then the next, the next thing they've asked is, then fine, then we want you to transport it to somewhere else. Well, we went, uh, to Advance, and they said, "Well, that's gonna cost somebody. Uh, we're not just gonna come and take that." And then it, they don't even take it here. From what it's been explained to me is, it has to go to a special facility licensed, uh, by, by the state to do that. And right now, the only one that Advance, uh, can take it to would be, I believe it's the Island Lake, uh, processing facility, and that's not with their contract. So, there, to answer your question, we can do anything, uh, but every time that I take one of these items before I bring it to the board, I try to fill out, uh, I guess, the HOA that, uh, where that person came from. And what I have, what I have experienced is, a lot of people say, "We like it," but, uh, we don't want it like right, right there where you're bringing it.
Of course.
Trustee Cook?
On the face of it, it, as you said, Mark, it's an advantage to negotiate it now while it's still a competitive market. Do, do you really think, though, that Advance feels like it's a competitive market? I mean, how far down the road are they on this? Would they be willing to negotiate like they're, you know, planning on sticking around, or?
Well, as John mentioned, they've hired an attorney to essentially try to oppose the merger on the, on the grounds that it's gonna create, um, one giant conglomerate. Uh, and there will be a lack of competitiveness between communities. I think, I think they're willing to extend as far out as five years on the agreement. I think they're willing to go that far, um, because if they don't, uh, if, if the merger goes through, then it becomes Waste Management's issue to handle our contract.
Well, as someone who's been one of their biggest critics, um, they have been, of late, much more responsive in terms of, uh, clearing up several of the problems that we've had, uh, including the way they handled the Baytree thing. including the way they handled the Baytree thing. So I think it would probably be in our best interest to go ahead and renegotiate this while it's still at least a slightly competitive market.
Sure.
Well, how many years are left on the landfill, which is, is that actually Gray's Lake off of 83, the big one? How many years?
Pretty sure it is.
How many years is left? Because I thought that thing was, you know, getting real close to capacity 10 years ago.
Less than 10.
Yep, that's right. You are correct, Mayor, that's what the other concern is, the whole landscape is going to change, they're gonna have to find something.
Yeah, so what's the game plan? Does Swalco wanna get in the dump business? There's a moneymaker. Holy Christ, what do they charge per truck to dump a truck? Man, it's gotta be a lot of money.
Fifty tons.
No, how much?
Fifty dollars a ton.
Fifty dollars per ton.
Yeah, it's that packet change, and those things hold how many tons? Not one ton. Yeah, you pack that thing pretty good.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm going, but, but, you know, okay, what happens, you know, okay, where's, where's there a landfill being planned?
So I do have a Swalco meeting planned for later this month, and that's one of the questions I can ask, and, you know, regionally, I think that is a concern. At the last quarterly meeting, that was also expressed, I had heard something similar to Dave, that that landfill is going to be nearing its expiration. I've also seen in the paper, which I'm sure others have, that Zion, there was a big chunk of land purchased at the Zion landfill, which, you know, who knows, maybe that's why Waste Management is trying to acquire him, because that's the Advanced landfill, and maybe they want that for the future.
So Advance has a landfill up there?
They do.
And how many years is left on that one?
So I don't know the current one, but I saw that there's a plan to purchase the land next to it.
Additionally?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you recall, a few years back in Harvey, they were going to put that giant incinerator, and they, they had all the EPA blessings and everything, and the community just beat up the local county, city, village, whatever, and it never happened. And yet, everybody thought it was a marvelous way to turn garbage into something that had a little bit of value. It doesn't have much, but has some BTU value to create steam, to create generation.
Well, there's a giant facility down in Robbins, I think it is, Wheeler Brager built it 20 years ago, and it went, it never was used, you know, and I mean, this thing, if you saw it, you'd go, holy mackerel.
That's Japan, they burn most of their garbage.
Japan ended up, I know, when I was in the automobile business, tires, they took the tires, $2 a tire, you make a brick out of it, when you take a tire and split in half some way or another, it's not a hazardous waste. So they stack it, take it in a ship, and it goes to Japan, they use it for, for heating and running factories, they take the steel.
How the hell is it smell?
Steel belt, I don't know, they take the steel belt, and they recycle that. So that's, that goes back.
So are we gonna, are we going to, are you gonna open up discussions with them on?
Yeah.
So I felt that, you know, in talking to Mark and council, we felt that we needed board approval to begin that, and, you know, and affirming what you had stated, so they're aware to, that, you know, earlier this year, they had a couple bumpy days to answer a couple of the questions. Yes, the Baytree settlement was completed, new trucks have been in service, another one was presented today that they're going to be bringing in, and I think when Chris did his presentation here, he talked about, I think this year, 33% of the trucks are gonna be turning over and being new, so I believe a new one's entering services, another new one is entering service this week. Liz is the point of contact for the smaller complaints, I'm the point of contact for the larger ones. I can share this with you from staff perspective, they've given us their personal mobile numbers where we can get ahold of them after hours, they're very responsive, I would think the community would also feel the same, well, nobody likes the reported spills or some of the other things that have occurred, we'll call them on their cell, and we'll get an email saying they're dispatching somebody to address it, you know, before we get out of here. So a couple, you know, that's a couple observations from the staff level, and then, you know, they, as you heard Mark state, you know, they have been good community partners as far as sponsoring our events, they're gonna sponsor Fall Fest in addition to, in addition to Summer Sales, so, you know, for a, from a contractual vendor standpoint, they've been easy for us, so I guess I'm asking the board if they've been good for the residents, you know, my request would be to allow us at least to enter into discussions, maybe even bring Chris back in to present one more time before we approve the contract, to say, these are some of the ideas they have, because their recycling idea and their scrapping idea, it's interesting, and, but we felt it might be too much for tonight throwing it all out there at the same time.
Can I ask one question about?
Trustee Oppenheimer.
Who hired the attorney, was that Swalco? Are there any other avenues that we could potentially pursue to, like, asking IML or any other organizations that would wanna get involved?
I'm not sure, but the United States Department of Justice is also involved in this as well, because they have to.
I know this is like 12 levels above us, of course, but I'm just curious where, so the Department of Justice is looking closely, obviously, but do we know?
Yeah.
Where things stand with that, or?
Yeah, they are. This is all gonna have to be blessed and approved by them if the merger is to take place.
Yeah, I'm sure they do, hold their cards close, I'm just wondering if we should get other organizations involved, at least, you know, to write letters or things like that, just to give.
See, we don't, we're in a unique position, because many of the communities are in multi-year contracts already. We're in a unique position, because our contract is going to expire around the time that the merger would become final. So if you're in a community that already has a five-year contract or four years left on your contract, they're not all that concerned about it until four years from now, or three and a half years from now. So we are in a unique position, and I'm not quite frankly sure if there's anyone else that is in our position. We can certainly, we can certainly look and see.
Three to four years is not such a long horizon in terms of.
No, but at least that way you'll.
Long-term monopoly.
No, it's not, it's not.
So I, that's why I was just wondering if municipal league was, was getting involved in any way, in addition to Swalco.
Would it be the Lake County Municipal League, would they have a position on this?
So I believe Swalco is the lead agency, and this is their primary goal, is Waste Matters, and so, and when we go to that meeting, every entity in Lake County is there, and I'm sure IML members are represented as well, but our board members there, the county's represented, so, and they're the ones that, you know, were sharing with us the strategy that, hey, we need to be cautious of this merger, if this happens, you know, prices are gonna potentially go up, because there's now, I provided a list in the previous transmittal, there's only so many vendors out there now if this happens, so they're the ones that raise the alarm bell, and they're the ones that have had this strategy and asked us, the member communities, permission to pay for the attorney. So I, my take is, you know, you're more than welcome to come with us next, I believe it's like the 21st of September, to a board meeting, Swalco board meeting, to hear, you know, how aggressive they are, and I'll get an update at that time as well.
Do you need a motion from us, or just consensus to start negotiating?
Just consensus.
I'm in favor.
Yeah, in favor.
No problem.
Yeah.
Please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Because that would be a problem. If garbage was just sitting on the curb, that would be a real problem.
Plow the snow and pick up the garbage.
Okay, all right, what do we got next? La, 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 la.
Kane McKenna.
Yeah, okay, new business communication, consideration, a motion to approve a consulting agreement with Kane McKenna and Associates to provide financial review services related to the redevelopment of the Hawthorne Mall.
Thank you, Mr. President, that pretty much sums it up. What we're asking for is a motion to approve a consulting agreement with Kane McKenna and Associates for financial services relating to the redevelopment of Hawthorne Mall. Kane McKenna would assist the village in assessing the ultimate, if any, TIF requests that may be made by the owner or the developer regarding the redevelopment of Hawthorne Mall, and ultimately determine the level of participation in the project, of public participation in the project, let me make that clear. The estimated cost for the consulting services between $12,000, $12,515,000.
Not to exceed 15?
Not to exceed. This is billed on an hourly basis, so obviously, this is, they would conduct the gap analysis, review any pro forma or numbers that are submitted by the developer, and ascertain whether or not, what the level of participation should be.
Motion, motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second, I, comment, question?
Yeah, yeah.
My only point is, the point I've passed on to both Mark and Jim Farilla, is that I want them to be a little more aggressive this time, in other words, dig deeper into what is actually appropriate, as opposed to, with regard to Melody Farms, they more or less did an overview of what Melody Farms was requesting, and certified that that was a reasonable number. I'd like them to come forward with what they think independently is a reasonable number, and then compare that with whatever requests may come forward to us.
We'll pass that on.
Makes sense.
Yeah, who's our, who is our lead guy?
Was it Bob Richlicky? Bob Richlicky from Kane McKenna?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I think Bob would work with us again.
And who else works with him?
You got Phil McKenna, and then there's a couple of younger associates there.
Yeah. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions, if not, roll call.
Trustee Takayoka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now, we're going into closed session after committee of the hall.
Yes, sir, discuss, to discuss personnel pursuant to section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, so there's a motion to adjourn.
No.
No? Oh, sorry, new communication. Any new business, any new, oh.
Go ahead.
Trustee Schultz.
You gonna talk twice as long tonight?
No, but I will, I think everybody, well, at least everybody on the dais knows what I'm gonna talk about. We had two horrible incidents within a 13-hour period.
One shortly before that.
And, exactly. I keep saying, I don't know what we can do, but there was one thing that struck me coming out of this horrible occurrence, was that the people responded in those communities to a call for blood drives, and that was utterly amazing. I mean, the lines were around the block, it was hotter than Hades out in several of these locations, and yet, people, so that is something, by showing your support, by donating blood, I think is, is an outstanding way to kind of make a social comment. There's two entities in Lake County, one's Life Source, they're in the neighborhood here, and then there's the Red Cross, well, I shouldn't say, Life Source is over at 176 and Waukegan, and then the Red Cross is down Arlington Heights at Ran Road. Take some time out of your day, and if you can't, you know, do anything else to prevent this senseless violence that's going on, at least help our first responders by ensuring that there's a large and adequate supply of blood available, but hopefully, we can do something on the first point, and not just having to respond. That's it.
Trustee Cook.
We talked earlier tonight about summer celebration, and I just wanted to pass on to both Public Works and especially the Police Department, the National Night Out that we had was, it was an outstanding evening. The turnout from the community, especially families, was, was amazing and wonderful, and the Police Department just did an outstanding job with, with that event, and a special thanks to, you know who all donated, but I saw that Chick-fil-A sandwiches were, you know.
2,500.
Yeah. It turned out, and the weather couldn't have been better, it was, it was a great evening, so, thank you, Chief, and the help of Public Works and that, it was a great event.
Certainly, we'll pass that on, thank you.
And then what, this weekend, the Park District has Rib Fest?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And that's Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday evening.
And Sunday, it's done.
I think it's done on Saturday, I think that's it.
Well, I mean, Saturday, yeah.
Just Friday and Saturday.
And they'll have entertainment and obviously food, and there's a $5 admission, and it's a nice event, and that site up there that we collectively helped the Park District buy, it's, it's worked out great for summer celebration, because you got extra room, and I'm sure it'll be very nice this weekend, too, so hopefully, they got much better weather than us. So anyway, come one, come all, have a nice time. All right, now, we, we got a motion to adjourn.
So, aye.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Consensus.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takayoka?
Aye.
You gonna call?
President Byrne, sorry.
It's all right if you don't call, you know, all right. Aye, motion carries. Okay, I'd like to call the Committee of the Hall meeting to order, first items approved of the Committee of the Hall meeting minutes of July 16, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any comments, questions, deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takayoka?
Epstein.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the Goddard School, and that's gonna be handled by Director Mike Atkinson, and we have, obviously, representatives there from the Goddard School, and you can introduce yourself, please.
I'm Ellen Lay, I'm the owner of the Goddard School.
Yeah, and then, I know him, but you can introduce himself, too.
I'm Robert Helly, I'm assisting with the Goddard School Development.
Helly was the group that did Pathway Senior Living, the Victory Center, for those watching at home, and it turned out nice. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shown on the screen in front of you is the site plan that shows a proposed 3,780 square foot, one-story addition that would be constructed on the west rear side of the existing Goddard School, that's shown in orange on the screen in front of you. Access to the site would remain the same, which is through a shared access drive with the vacant bank building to the north. This picture here shows you that addition on the left side, if you look at the top picture, it's to the left. The, the brick and stone would match that of the existing building, the height, which is approximately 28 feet above grade, would also match the existing building. The play area that's shown in the top picture would be relocated from where it is right now to that location, which is south of the addition. Regarding parking, as the board is aware, this property is located within the Aspen Point Planned Unit Development, and parking for this particular site is set at 4.7 spaces per 1,000 square feet. This was set back when the original Aspen Point PUD was approved, and at that time, it was contemplated that a two-story office building would be constructed on the site, that obviously isn't the case, so the parking is probably a little more stringent than, than what's required. The PUD does allow a variance from this requirement upon the middle of a parking study, the petitioners have provided that study, they did so with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's also attached to your packet. The results indicate, first of all, a current peak demand of 29 spaces, that's right now before the addition, and that includes 10 student drop-offs and 19 teachers at capacity at its peak time. Based on a 20% increase in student counts, which is what the Goddard School anticipates, and an additional four teachers to accommodate those students, that would result in 12 student drop-offs and 23 teachers at capacity, total of 35 parking spaces, they have 36 parking spaces, so the study would indicate that, that they would have adequate parking. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing regarding this matter on July 10, and overall, the commission was supportive of the addition as proposed, they did request that the Goddard School approach Chili's to obtain a, they had had an informal agreement regarding the use of their parking lot, particularly during those times when the Goddard School has a special event. during those times when the Goddard School has a special event, because it exceeds the typical capacity during daily operations. They asked that a more formal letter be obtained from Chili's. The Goddard School has done that, and that letter is attached to your packet.
So there's a cross-season agreement?
There's a letter of agreement, and again...
China?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a letter to clarify, and really, it's only needed when the Goddard School has a special event.
What's the deal with the bank property? Can you get a size net selling? It's not size, is it? Oh, it is size, okay. Well, we can call size. I can't believe you can't make a cross-season agreement with size on that, for Christ's sake. Has that been tried?
We didn't do anything like that.
Well, that's closer.
It is, but if anything does move into the bank, then they would, that would prevent us from parking there. They don't have a lot of parking there already, and so if they have any tenant in there, I would imagine they would need all of their spots. So Chili's has, Chili's has been a really great neighbor of ours. So we, they, if they have overflow once in a while, they'll come over to our parking lot, and so years ago, we worked through that.
Okay. All right.
So the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, if I may, Mr. Mayor, was broken up into three different votes.
Right.
The first one, on a vote of seven in favor and zero against, was to recommend approval of an amendment to the amended and restated development agreement approved in ordinance two thousand five dash twenty-one and dash twenty-two. That's the original ordinances that approved the Aspen Point PUD to allow the revisions to the approved plans, allowing the addition to a building, including a parking variance, as I just described to you. The second recommendation is on a vote of seven in favor, zero against, to recommend approval to amend ordinance two thousand eight dash zero-three, granting a revision to the special use permit that was previously granted by the board to the Goddard School back in two thousand eight. Then finally, the third motion, on a vote of seven in favor and zero against, recommends approval of final site plan, landscape plan, and building elevations. So for tonight, if the COW concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the addition, subject to the drawings that were presented to you tonight, and in accordance with the conditions that are outlined in your packet.
Well, since the commission voted so unanimously, I'll make the motion to direct staff to prepare the necessary paperwork.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Trustee Takaoke?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and we want to thank staff and Mike Atkinson, who's helped us so much through the process. Thank you.
And Dave Brown as well.
Yeah. Well, good. And you'll get started in the, I don't know, next couple of weeks?
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay. All right. What next?
Next is the parking lot.
Who are the gentlemen here for the parking lot? Seven, seven-five Corporate Woods Parkway. Hey, what's the name of your business?
Good evening, President. My name's Dave Gillespie, Gillespie Design Group. We're the architects for Blitten Gaines.
I haven't seen you in a log day.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah.
We're here with Louisa...
Penitzis.
Penitzis, the controller of Blitten Gaines, and Fred Biocello, Buildcore, who is the builder.
Okay.
And so what we're seeking tonight is your approval for the site improvements for the new parking lot adjacent to the building.
Any, staff had any issues with this, or...
Well, we've went through a round of, actually, two rounds of technical review. Staff is comfortable with it. I can, I can explain to you, Blitten Gaines is, it's an office use, it's attorneys.
Yeah.
They're going to have initially a hundred employees. They want to expand the parking lot because they anticipate, excuse me, a hundred and fifty employees initially. They anticipate as many as north of two hundred employees, and with this in mind, they want to expand the parking lot. They bought the building at seven seventy-five Corporate Woods. That's the building shown on the site plan in front of you. They also bought the vacant lot to the west, and that's where they want to approve the parking lot. There'd be a hundred and forty-two spaces that would be constructed. It would bring the overall capacity for that facility to two hundred and fifty-four spaces. Per the requirements of the Corporate Woods PUD, they would maintain a fifty-foot buffer along Corporate Woods Parkway and along Hickory Drive, as shown on the screen in front of you. There'd also be several landscape islands within the parking field. As the board is aware, the annexation agreement authorizing the Corporate Woods PUD requires approval from the village board for site changes, but does not require a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, so the board can act on this request tonight. And if the COW feels that the proposed parking lot expansion is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the amended site plan and the amended landscape plan in accordance with the drawings presented to you tonight, and in accordance with the conditions outlined in your packet.
Trustee Schultz.
Can you go back to the aerial? Thank you. That was kind of the only connection point possible between the Darby... Darling, excuse me.
Yeah, the Darling property.
And unless there's something further down.
There's, there is a subdivided lot between the Darling property and Forest Edge Drive. It's a, it's a recorded lot of record. It's about eighty feet wide. It connects the Darling property to Forest Edge Drive. There are no improvements on it.
Okay.